I'd like to call to order the Lloyd of Education organizational meeting on Wednesday, January 8, 2020. Mrs. Bruno, would you please take a call?
Mrs. Garvey.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mrs. O'Toole.
Here.
Mr. Kanziger.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Y'all, please join me in standing face the flag for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now I'll turn the meeting over to Mrs. Bruno to conduct the tax budget hearing.
Okay. So, revised code requires that we hold a public hearing for the tax budget. Could you hold it for me, mind, for a second? This is in draft form right now. You'll approve it later in the meeting unless there are changes. So, this is not technically the public portion of the board meeting, but it is public because it's the public hearing on the tax budget. Although I know that anybody is going to want to comment or have questions. But you'll see if you move through this, the very first page is just kind of background and explaining it. Second page is sort of telling you what each schedule is, gives some direction to the treasurers who are preparing them. Third page is a listing of all of our levies. We are requesting, as usual, we are requesting the maximum amount allowed to be collected on those, all of those levies currently. You will notice a little bit of a change this time from the last time you saw it. You would have seen at the bottom there, the four and a half mils you would have seen inside mileage, all in the general fund, since we have moved that. That is now separated out between the general fund and the PI. Good night, you go on. The next schedule there, these are kind of small, but really the one that matters the most is the general fund. If you were to take the five-year forecast and take the taxes that we are expecting for fiscal '21 on that five-year forecast status, what I have put in the tax budget, there are times, and I don't have enough experience with Cuyahoga yet, to understand their, how they come to the number yet. So, I did my current estimate. They may approve it at a slightly different rate depending on, you know, sometimes they'll say they'll use 97.2% as the collection rate. I maybe use 97.5% or something like that. So, once we get our actual certificate back from them, it may be a little bit different. Should not be significantly different. And then the rest of these funds, those are all estimates just based on history. We can and do amend this. This is for the fiscal year ending June 30th of '21. So, right now, we're talking, you know, a year and a half in advance. I don't necessarily know exactly what's going to happen. So, these are estimates just based on history, and if we need to change our certificate of estimated resources, we certainly do that from time to time.
Ashley, what's the difference between the OO3 Permanent Agreement Fund and the OO4 Building Fund? Have we ever talked about that before?
So, the OO4, your building fund, is just for buildings. It's where we are currently paying for the intermediate school stuff. All of the money from that is in there. OO3 is, it encompasses more. It's a broader spectrum.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are there any questions on any of those or any of the amounts? It's pretty typical. I don't want to go through it too much just because it changes. It's very standard. Okay. The next schedule there is for our debt, the unvoted general debt. You can see the energy conservation improvement bonds, Series 11 and 11B, just showing the amount of the principal that will be outstanding at the beginning of that fiscal year, that is not necessarily what is outstanding currently. And then the amount that we expect to need to pay during that fiscal year. The amount receivable there in that last column, that is the money that comes back on the federal industry. And then, moving to the next one, this is the debt outside of the 10 mil limit. Again, you can see the individual bonds there. We have the refunding bonds from 2012 A and B, and then the school improvement bonds from 2017, principal outstanding at the beginning of next fiscal year, and then what we expect to be required to meet principal and interest payments for those items. And then the last schedule there is tax anticipation notes, which we do not have any right now, but we still have to include the schedule. Are there any questions?
No questions.
Any questions from the public? This is a public hearing, so. Okay.
Should we move to the organization of the board for 2020?
So, first item that we need to take care of is to administer the oath of office for our two new board members who are going to be in. Do we stand?
We can do it. You can do a spot.
Okay. Sounds good. Do you want to repeat after me? I, state your name.
I, Catherine Garvey.
I, Sharon Rose.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will uphold the office.
And that I will uphold the office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of the Chagrin Falls Exempted Village School District.
Of the Chagrin Falls Exempted Village School District.
Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Congratulations.
I missed it.
I'm going to stage a photo.
We're not very good at staging a high five. Do I have any of the two?
Okay. Ready? One, two, three.
Now, it was like turning into like an awkward wave.
Four more years.
Four more years. Okay.
Your last hour.
So, next on the agenda is the election of our president for 2020. Can I have any nominations for president? I'd like to nominate Mr. Phil Rankin. Any second?
We're just naming nominations right now.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. And let's close the nominations. Mrs. Bruno, would you please take a call?
I need a motion second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to nominate Phil Rankin as the president of the board?
No, to close the nominations.
I'm sorry. Close the nominations.
Okay.
And a second?
Sorry.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. O'Toole, seconded by Mrs. Rose. Mrs. Bruno, would you please take a call?
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Okay.
No backing out.
No, now you all have to vote. That was to close the nominations.
Oh.
Now you all have to vote.
Oh, I see.
And because we only have one, if we had only one, you would have to state the name, but you can just say yes, or I will call roll again. This is the official vote.
So, now is the motion?
I don't need a motion. That was to close.
Just need a roll call for Mr. Rankin.
Yes, roll call. So, Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
And Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Sorry. All that confusion.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll do the same thing for vice president. We need nominations.
Okay. Can I have nominations for vice president?
I nominate Greg Kanziger. Hoping he will accept.
Any other nominations? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the nominations? So, move. And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Rose, seconded by Mrs. O'Toole. Mrs. Bruno?
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
And now, to elect Greg as vice president, we'll call a roll.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you for taking oath of office.
Do we do this together?
Actually, no. The words are slightly different.
Who do you go first?
We'll do president first.
All right.
Ready this time?
I'm ready.
I, state your name.
I, Phil Rankin.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will uphold the office.
And I will uphold the office.
Of president of the Board of Education.
Of the president of the Board of Education.
Of the Chagrin Falls Exempted Village School District.
Of the Chagrin Falls Exempted School District.
I, Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
I present you with the official ballot. And in this court, you're going to move here with you.
We'll have to rename it Full Chamber.
I, state your names. Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will uphold the office.
And I will uphold the office.
Of vice president of the Board of Education.
Of vice president of the Board of Education.
Of the Chagrin Falls Exempted Village School District.
Of the Chagrin Falls Exempted Village School District.
Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Congratulations. Greg, do you want to say your?
If you want us to.
It's up to you.
It's on fire. Okay. We can do it next meeting.
Okay.
We'll just communicate to all of them.
Yeah. If you guys come in early next meeting, just put the seats wherever you want them. That'll be good. Okay? So, Phil, does Phil take over the meeting?
Officially, yes. It says the newly elected president and vice president assume the chairs. The chairs are staying where they are, so we are officially the president.
Fantastic.
So, do you want to move to item D? Would you like me to?
Yeah.
Okay. Item D, it is recommended that the Chagrin Falls Board of Education approve the following. First is the appointment of the board's legislative meeting on March 2020. Need to appoint your legislative meeting.
Who was it this year?
That was me.
Okay. Keeping us informed of legislative updates.
If you're willing to do it again, then.
I do read things, but they're mostly the stuff we all know, so. It's all for the benefit.
Sure.
Item two, the treasurer is authorized to seek employee dishonesty, faithful performance of duty coverage policies for the board president, superintendent, and treasurer. Bonds in the amount of $100,000 of coverage each. This is standard, we do have these in place. Item three, regular meetings will be held on the first and third Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM in the Lunas Sands Community Room, 342 East Washington Street, Chagrin Falls, Ohio, with the attached exceptions. I don't know that they are actually listed here, but we will approve the actual schedule. Item four, board member presentation and group benefit plans provided to the employees of the district by paying the full premium of the treasurer to the treasurer to the district in monthly installments. Item five, in accordance with Section 3315.15 of the ORC, a board service fund will be established in the amount of $3,000 from the general fund. Item six, establish a records committee consisting of the board presidents, the superintendent and the treasurer to review and recommend disposition of district records. And item seven, to allocate interest to funds 001, 004, 006, 007-9204, that 9204 is the special class center, and 401 proportionate to the fund balances. Those are the current funds that we establish for interest for the previous calendar year as well. Recommended due for those. Motion and second.
Okay. Anybody want to, can I have a motion to approve the items?
I move to approve items D1 through 7.
And a second?
Okay. So, Bruno, will you take the roll?
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Keep going.
Um, yes. I'm just trying to find.
Resolution update.
Thank you.
Number one, resolution 20001, authorized the treasurer be authorized to cause payment on district debts by effecting signed warrants and support notification accounts provided with payments are within the board from adopted incorporation. Set payments are to be reported monthly to the board of education. Number two, resolution that the treasurer be authorized to establish direct deposit arrangements with Kyle and John County Honors for deposit and distributions in the district bank accounts. Item three, resolution of the board of education, superintendent schools authorization to grant fees to board of education employees. To attend school business oriented functions held at either a local, county, or national level to allow reimbursement expenses to said employees according to the board policies and preferred rates. Item four, resolution of the board that superintendent is official district purchasing agent. The absence of the superintendent for direct operations and strategic initiatives shall designate me as official district purchasing agent. Designation is to include all state and federal grants programs. Number five, board of education that authorize superintendent to employ temporary personnel, which includes substitutes and emergency replacement personnel. Any appointments will be presented the board of education for approval at the release meeting. Item six, resolution of the board of education appoint the educational service center of Pow County as the hearing office for student discipline matters. Item seven, the board of education appoint the superintendent to represent the Pow High School Association for valedictorship and valedictorian student transfer. Resolution eight, the board of education authorize the superintendent to accept all resignations. Item nine, the board of education authorize the superintendent to invoke emergency action to repair or replace property or otherwise make possible the continuous operations of school and further to close schools or dismiss for any event of hazardous weather or other emergencies. Item ten, the board of education authorize superintendent to update construction materials, coursework, and textbooks as needed. Eleven, board of education authorize the superintendent to update procedures related to parental modification of board curriculum requirements. Item twelve, board of education authorize the superintendent seek to participate in grants and contracts for various funding programs of outsourced sources. Number thirteen, designate the late dealer, Chagrin Dollar Times, and Chagrin Sol and Son as official meeting for purchase of payment notices. Item fourteen, designate the firms of Pepple and Wagner, Squire of Adam Boggs, Britton Smith and Peters and Leo, Britton Mac Titer and See, Brecker and Eckler, Walter Haverfield, and Riley Law Firm as legal counsel for the calendar year 2020 on a vast basis about board superintendent in the board red room. At fifteen, board of education designate the firm of Gallagher Benefit Services as helping to promote and consult in the calendar year 2020. Item sixteen, board of education in accordance with the Ohio Vice Code, appoint the treasurer as the board's official designated to attend Hospital 9 Public Records Training. Item seventeen, board of education adopt proposed tax budget for fiscal year 21.
Can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
I want to point out on seventeen that an earlier version of the agenda said that the tax budget was for fiscal year 2020. That was not directed until today, so I just want to make sure everyone understands that tax budget hearing that we had earlier was for fiscal '21.
And item eighteen, Chagrin Falls Board of Education authorize the treasurer CFO to direct operation of Mac Titer and See, and authorize counsel for the board to appear in a variety of council roles. I'm sorry, my computer went out.
Property tax valuation issues.
All of these are typical annual recommendations to the board of education when the board has covered necessary.
Regarding number eighteen.
Yes.
Before you joined us last year, the board reviewed great practices and clarified how we wanted to implement the guidelines and had talked about trying to understand better whether or not, how much it serves us to have a board or president to pursue some of these. It was a reacquisition here in Cuyahoga, so the board felt that was not the best way to investigate that further. But I would be interested in, if other board members were, your opinion on this practice maybe in a few months, as you see how it's going, whether or not you think it's worth while.
I do think certainly it's worthwhile, just in my opinion, to have somebody on this. I don't know that the levels that we have established here maybe are the best. I don't really have an opinion on that.
Yes, I'd love to circle back in a few months.
But just so you know, in order to file anything with the BOR, an attorney actually has to file that for us. So, we do have to have someone on file for that.
Right. I think it's more the parameters around which we would engage.
Yeah, and he is, he is following those. In fact, he emailed me something about, a question about Vanaya, and he kind of referenced our policy and said, well, according to your policy, X, Y, Z. I was kind of like, what?
Yeah, that's good.
So, they are following the parameters, I mean, I said.
Okay. Great, great. I just had a quick question, Bob. It's just a word, it might just be a wording thing, but maybe it's something that I am misunderstanding. Number nine, that you could close schools or dismiss early, but it doesn't mention start late. Does that mean you don't have authority to have a late start?
Um.
Or do we not have late starts?
I would say late start close start, or closing schools is, you're closing for those few hours.
It's already happened. You know what I'm saying? I think it's because students would have been here.
But dismiss early isn't also, just because it's, it's separated out?
You can add early release. I actually had this conversation with Karen today. Early release was utilized more when we had a limited number of days. So, we had a five-day school year, and we would try to leverage that to not use those days, and eventually add those on. We switched to hours, which would be a significantly higher number of days. We would not let them delay the start, causing a variety of transportation, parent issues, unless, you know, we were around, you know, these 112 days off of school, right? You can serve all parents, but we want to add that language just to make sure it's clear and, you know, that's fine.
So, you wouldn't engage with a late start? You would close school all together?
I would close school.
Do you need the resolution to include the authority for you to have a delayed start?
It would not hurt, so we want to add that clarification certainly.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion of the items?
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Okay. So, next we have other business of the board representations for 2020. I know I circulated a list of this, and, you know, it kind of came to consensus on different committees that we are going to be on. Not a lot of changes. I don't know, I can kind of, I'll read through the, basically the deltas that we have versus the schedule that we had before, and I'll republish this, or have Barlow republish it for everybody. Sharon's going to be adding to the board audit committee, so I guess maybe I'll just read some of each committee. So, board audit committee, I can give you a whole schedule of this. So, board audit committee, so tell me if I need to make changes. Mary Kay is the chair. I'll be on there. You share. Okay, no, you two.
Now, if the president can.
Well, anybody, you wouldn't be an official member.
You can attend.
You could just go anywhere.
Or you can be an official member, and I can.
Oh, it's okay. I'll be unofficial. That's perfect. All right. So, Mary Kay is chair, Business Advisory Committee.
Counsel.
You did.
Yeah. So, Catherine?
Catherine is chair?
Yes.
And there's just one part of that.
Correct. Yep, and then we are going to take, I think, the facilities Master Planning Committee, combine it with the Board Capital Planning Committee. And on that, it'll be Catherine is the chair. Sharon is a member. Greg is secretary. I think that I'll be unofficial. I like this. Board Policy Committee will be Mary Kay. Do you have to indicate a chair?
I believe so.
You want to be the chair, so.
It's okay.
Thank you. So, Mary Kay is the chair, and Greg is a member as well. Board Touch Business Advisory Committee, Core Construction Committee, is that? I'm sorry, I'm going to file this, not the meeting.
It's no longer necessary to exist. Just back up on the, the Board Records Committee, so that would be you, which we just voted on.
Okay.
But that's on this agenda, so.
Gotcha.
Okay. And then Superintendent Advisory Committees.
Yep. Superintendent Advisory Committees. So, Business Advisory Committee, that would be Catherine once again. And then Finance Committee. So, we have Catherine as the chair, and Greg as a member. Healthcare Committee, stay the same with Mary Kay and Sharon. Senior Counsel, Mary Kay. Strategic Planning Committee will be Greg and Catherine. And Technology Committee will be Greg and Sharon.
I'm a little long there.
We lost any of the changes.
Did I change?
Yeah. So, all liaisons are staying the same? Yes.
We did the legislative liaison just now, it was Mary Kay.
I was talking.
The delegate and the alternate delegate will do at the June meeting, when we have a better idea of who's going to the Capitol Conference. And then support organizations are remaining the same? Are there any changes there?
Yep, those are all staying the same. Except for the, I mean, the Lending Committee. So, the Lending Committee members who are represented will be Mary Kay and Greg, with obviously the rest of us participating as well. And everything else remains the same.
I want to throw a wrench in at the last minute, but after hearing some updates on things happening in Bainbridge, I wonder if we should have a board rep officially to Bainbridge? We have them, we have a board of Fentleyville and Chagrin Falls and South Russell. It's a smaller constituency, but there seem to be some actions being taken by that municipality that are going to impact our taxes. So, it might be good if one board member just kind of keeping an eye on that in addition to the superintendent.
I'll do Bainbridge and Moreland Hills and Dallas, maybe.
Okay.
Unless anyone else wants it.
Bainbridge and Moreland.
Then we're all covered. Bainbridge and Moreland Hills.
Will you be able to get all that?
Yeah. I got it.
Perfect. All right. Thank you all very much, very smoothly. Appreciate it. I appreciate all the efforts that each one of you did to fill in with all these committees and all these different activities. So, next, we have the Super News Calendar. Let's see, this is probably my arm, so does anybody have any changes that they would like for the months that they've got?
I would propose that we need to start fresh. This is the same schedule we've got this year, which may or may not work for people, but the last couple of years, the president has done the January and December issue, kind of opening, it gives you an opportunity to introduce yourselves as board president to introduce yourselves as the Board President, and then kind of close the year. So if you want, you and I can just switch if those dates work for other people, but there might be dates that people can't, that are not as convenient. Doesn't matter.
That's all this year.
Okay. No, mine too. So Phil, do you want to just switch your names with my name?
Sure.
And then that'll be that easy. Okay.
Okay, good, good idea. And maybe, so next item, the Board Governments Document, maybe Catherine and Sharon, do you want to go through those with us?
Yeah, I can, so we updated the manual last year to reflect some of the changes in policy and also changes to how we run our meetings, and so those are really just now being incorporated into the manual that we're going to adopt. Usually each year we adopt the first section, which is our governing commitments to each other, it's a two-page document that really defines our beliefs as being Board members. But in this case, we're going to adopt the whole document because of those changes that reflect policy changes. So I don't have a complete redline version, but I think one of the changes was that we have now, both of our meetings each month are our regular meetings, whereas previously we had work sessions. We just had a policy meeting yesterday to round out some policies with regard to the agenda, and you'll see there's some changes on page seven that reflect that we are moving more to an agenda process that allows for remote participation by Board members rather than a physical meeting taking place in the week prior to the Board meeting. Then, so again, instead of disseminating an agenda, you'll be able to access the agenda through Board packages, the way we've been doing that.
Can I just ask, you know, in the red, it says a week prior, or is it a week prior? I mean, is it really gonna be on Wednesday? I don't know.
Why did you make that change? Because I, that's new to me. Did you want to commit to it being done a week prior?
No, it says a draft.
Yeah, I mean, I would hate to put something.
We try, we try to have it out on Wednesday, draft up on Wednesday for her to.
And then they can. Why don't you say during the week prior to the Board meeting? And that gives some flexibility.
Yeah, I think, um.
Especially in the Treasury stuff, depending on the date of the meeting, you don't have the end of.
Yeah, once we set the schedule, I think we pretty much put kind of shell out there for every single meeting, so we're kind of always adding to it.
Right. Well, I think the idea was that as complete as possible, the draft would be available so the Board could then weigh in on whether they need changes to the Board agenda. So if we'll just change that to during the week prior to the meeting, I think that would be a sufficient change that doesn't obligate exactly seven days prior that we have the agenda.
Thank you.
Let's just go down through.
Can you really comment? But I was gonna cover that, too, on my group.
Okay, well, it kind of, you want to cover now?
Sure, just a minute's up. So the Governance Manual overlapped with, we had a Board Policy Meeting yesterday, and we just switched agendas. We had a Board Policy Meeting yesterday to clean up some lingering policies that we've been working on over the course of the year, but they've had a lot of discussion, and we've wanted time to reflect more before we made changes. And one of them was with regards to.
Public participation at Board meetings.
Public participation at Board meetings. We were working on the agenda, we obviously want to keep it as welcoming as possible to invite public comment in the Board meeting, but by policy, we have to set parameters around what that looks like and be consistent following it, so we made changes to the policy to reflect that, which are now also incorporated in the governance. The biggest change is really trying to emphasize that if you know in advance that you want to speak about something, you can reach out to the Superintendent and actually put it on the agenda.
And then procedurally, we talked about moving the public comment further down in the meeting, so we just.
Sure.
So some, some public bodies have two, two opportunities for public comment, one would be at the beginning, and one would be at the end. Both of those can be a little awkward, because before the meeting starts, you may not have heard information that would cause you to have questions or have a comment on, and then wait until the end, and you need to sit through the whole meeting before you can ask questions about something that was relevant.
And the Board has taken action.
Right, and the Board has already taken action. So we thought we would try moving our one public comment to after reports, so the Board, the Treasurer, and Superintendent may have reports, that's where we receive presentations, have discussion about those presentations, but before we actually vote on the item. And then we would open up for public comment, if there was any, at that time for a 30-minute time period maximum, and then close that, go to our voting then at that time. So we felt like that was responsive to a timely process for community input without, you know, taking away from the Board's ability to report and get, get the business of the Board done. So those are the biggest changes, and as you know, our Governance Manual references many of our policies, but just basically gives an overview of how we operate as a Board and what are our commitments to each other in our governance of the district.
Just procedurally, I think there's changes in here that, well, I think just got incorporated today based on policy, and we're asked to approve this tonight, are we doing a first reading? I just want to, you know, technically, I would think, I mean, it's not policy, but we usually do a first reading and then an adoption later, so I don't know if that's something that, for, I mean, you do that with the student handbooks, so I don't know if that's something that we need to do. I mean, there's nothing significant here, but.
I don't think you, we're moving multiple readings, we're legally required to have them. If you want, you know, more time to review it, then certainly.
It's kind of a looking document.
Any, any other discussion for A through C? Take the roll, please.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting? Second?
Second.
All right. Mrs. Bros, seconded by Mrs. Garvey, can you please take the roll?
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?